All right, good evening. Let's call the meeting to order. To start, I'll read how we're going to proceed with the meeting this evening. This is the regularly scheduled September 22 meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I'm joined by Tim Moran, Rebecca Holloman, Adam Miskel, Assistant Planner Busing, and City Planner Jaden True. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in a livestream meeting by accessing the link provided in the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice regarding meeting and public comment rule modification, a link to which is provided on the agenda for the meeting this evening. This evening, the Commission will continue a public hearing from our August 25 meeting, requesting regarding Agenda Items 5A and 5B. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public applicant and the Commission through our public hearing process. Staff will provide a recap of the requests and previous discussion and provide an update regarding answers to the questions previously posed by the Commission that happened on our last meeting on August 25. This may be followed by further Commission discussion testimony from the applicant or public if warranted. Any person speaking during the public hearing agree, understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Commissioners, please state your name prior to speaking or prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers. For example, Stocking, A, N, or abstain. Okay, so, short and sweet continuation of the public hearing from the August 25 meeting. Jaden, please call a roll.
All right. Mead, Evans, Slifka, Holloman.
Here.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, here.
Moran.
Moran, here.
Stocking.
Stocking, here.
We have a quorum.
All right, just barely. But we do have a quorum. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Move to approve. Moran?
Mataskill, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the next item is approval of our minutes of the August 25, 2022 meeting.
Moran, move to approve.
Mataskill, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we will move on to public hearing items now. Again, it's 5A and 5B. This is a continuation of the August 25, 2022 meeting. The first one, 5A, is a signed variation text amendment. It's a request to amend Section 11-14-5AC3 of the Geneva zoning ordinance to allow variations considering two, two additional signs beyond the maximum allowed amount of signs upon a zoning lot and location in the city of Geneva. And the applicant is Rob Bynes of Batavia Avenue Properties LLC. And the second item is 5B, sign variation. It's a request to allow two additional freestanding signs at 1550 and 2000, or -2000 Batavia Avenue. Location is 1950-2000 South Batavia Avenue. The PIN is 12-15-126-009, and the applicant is Rob Bynes of Batavia Avenue Properties LLC. Okay, Jaden, I believe you have some additional items to put on?
Yes. So I just wanted to provide a recap of our discussion from our last meeting and then kind of go into some questions that were posed by the Commission, what the staff found, and then give the Commission some options for potential recommendations to City Council regarding these two items. So, as I mentioned, so this zoning lot, this property that we're dealing with located on South, or on Batavia Avenue, it's fairly unique. It's a fairly large lot. It's all one zoning lot, but it has two, what we would consider, principal buildings located on the property. One of the buildings is located in front of the other, so it makes it a little difficult to, you know, see the rear building from the street frontage. Each building has multiple businesses inside of them. Additionally, this property has roughly 670 linear feet of frontage along Batavia Avenue, so it does have a decent amount of frontage. And currently, the property has three freestanding signs, which gets into the requests being presented by the applicant, which, right now, the city code allows one freestanding sign per zoning lot. Right now, it has three. The code permits the applicant to apply to the city for assigned variance to allow an additional, one additional sign, making, allowing up to two freestanding signs on the property. Because the applicant has three freestanding signs on the property right now, he is requesting to a text amendment to allow up to two additional freestanding signs on one zoning lot for a total of up to three freestanding signs for a zoning lot. That would all have to go through the variation process through the city if the text amendment was approved as presented. Additionally, the applicant would like to apply for that variance if it is recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, based on that information, there was some discussion at our August 25 meeting. We had three main questions posed by the Commission to staff. So, those three questions essentially were, number one, if a sign was erected prior to the passage of the zoning ordinance, is the sign still considered a non-conforming sign? The second question was, are there other examples where a sign, or a single zoning lot, has multiple freestanding signs? And then the third question was, when considering the text amendment to include a variation for a third freestanding sign, should the proposed text amendment include additional criteria to be met? If so, what criteria would be included in that amendment potentially? Okay? So now, I'll go into each of those questions and kind of provide a recap of what staff found. So as I mentioned, the first question, is a sign erected prior to the passage of the zoning ordinance still considered a non-conforming sign? So in the staff report, we provided a definition for what a nonconformity is. And then we also touched base with our legal counsel, just to, you know, get an opinion from them as well as to answer this question. And essentially, if a sign was erected prior to the passage of a zoning ordinance or a potential amendment to a zoning ordinance that created that nonconformity, or would make that sign no longer abide by the code, it would be considered a nonconforming sign, regardless of its status, if it was legal prior to the zoning code. Okay? Do we have any questions on that one so far? Okay. I'll move on to the next one, and we can always ask questions at any point, so. So the second question was, are there other examples where a single zoning lot has multiple freestanding signs? So, our Assistant Planner, Matt Busing, looked into that a little closer and provided a really organized, informative chart of 11 other zoning lots within the community that have multiple freestanding signs. I won't go into all the details, but essentially, there is only one other zoning lot with three freestanding signs, and that zoning lot has almost doubled the frontage as the subject property that we are investigating this evening. There are other zoning lots with frontage greater than the subject property that are managing two freestanding signs. Zoning lots with freestanding signs, with three freestanding signs, excuse me, are far less common and are typically permitted through approval of a governing planned unit development for the property. So out of those 11, as I mentioned, we only found one other property that had three freestanding signs, and that was at 1812/2100 South Randall Road, which I believe is the Randall Crossing Shopping Center. It's a shopping center, I don't know the exact name of it. The third question that was asked by the Commission is, you know, when considering the text amendment to include a variation for a third freestanding sign, should the proposed text amendment include additional criteria to be met? If so, what criteria could be included? So, I know, based on the decision, or the discussion that we had at the last meeting, we talked about, you know, potentially, frontage of a zoning lot needs to exceed a certain length. If there are multiple points of ingress and egress for, which are spaced out exceeding a certain length on that property, perhaps, you know, multiple freestanding signs would be okay in that situation. Frontage on more than one public street or multiple buildings may occupy the single zoning lot. So those were some criteria that I think we heard from the discussion, and maybe, you know, you could add that as a condition. You can apply for a third freestanding sign if you meet these. So if the Commission was interested in pursuing either or all of those, you know, there are some things that we need to identify, such as a distance for a zoning lot, or I'm sorry, the length of frontage a zoning lot has, so we need to establish that. And that would also apply to if there were multiple points of ingress and egress, if there's a distance between those, is there a certain number that, you know, the Commission might feel comfortable with? But ultimately, you know, staff was considering these options, and we have an existing variation process, which looks at each individual case independently. So, maybe these criteria are not necessarily needed, because, as I mentioned, we look at these variation requests on a case-by-case basis. So, if we did have, you know, a variation for a third freestanding sign come before the Commission, we could say, well, this property has these unique characteristics, and we don't really need criteria to rely on potentially. We could look at that independently on a case-by-case basis. The other thing to consider is, you know, are we amending the entire zoning code to address one specific issue? Is this, is this going to solve a community-wide problem, or is this just going to address one, you know, request that we have before us? How common is this going to be? Is this text amendment going to be generally applicable across the entire community? I think that's something that the Commission should consider moving forward. And then, as we get into the discussion, you know, we possibly will be making recommendations this evening for City Council to consider. For the text amendment, just to kind of review our options, so for the text amendment, you can recommend to approve it as presented, approve it with revised language, or deny the text amendment as presented. Regarding the sign variation, the Commission can recommend to approve the sign variation as presented, recommend approval of the sign variation with a revision, potentially that they could have two signs, two freestanding signs. That's currently allowed to be considered as a variation in our code right now. So the applicant's requesting three, but if the Commission sees it fit to allow two, we can still make that recommendation. Okay? And then the third option would be to deny the side variation. But we will have to make a recommendation on both, because these, we're a recommending body, and we'll be recommending those options to Planning and Zoning Commission, or I'm sorry, the City Council, which could potentially overturn our decision. So, I think I've talked enough this evening, so we can move on to the discussion, and they'll be happy to answer any questions the Commission might have.
Any questions? I guess I have a question. So what you're, what you just finished saying a moment ago is, because of this unique situation and us knowing that it probably won't come up continually within the community, at this point, we can reject the text amendment and still approve his request to add two signs because of his unique situation. Is that, is that correct or no?
So, you said deny the text amendment.
Right.
But recommend a total of three freestanding signs?
So, that's where I'm getting a little confused, is they have to go hand-in-hand, basically?
I, I don't think so, because the Plan, or I'm sorry, City Council could still approve the text amendment potentially, which then, if we approved for three freestanding signs, I mean, it might not make sense to do it that way, but it's, in theory, I guess it is, would be possible.
Well, we could allow two per the existing ordinance.
And that's allowable under the current.
Correct.
Ordinance.
Right, so we just wouldn't give him the extra one.
The extra one, it would just, would allow the second.
For one additional.
Understood.
Which is allowed under the current.
Okay, got it.
I just have a question, Jaden, for staff. In relation to the conforming and nonconforming sign, if, so you have a sign, and then the ordinance changes, and it is then a nonconforming sign, is there, like, a time limit or something that, where the sign needs to be brought up to conform, or it just, it just can stay as a nonconforming sign forever?
Well, so for, I guess, for any, anything in the zoning code, if there are changes sometimes in the ordinance, like, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council can place time limits to make sure that some things are brought up to code in a certain amount of time, or that this will go in effect after a certain amount of time to give, you know, residents or businesses time to adjust to that code change. But often, it does, you know, sometimes those code changes happen overnight, and it's in effect as soon as ordinance is signed.
And so then, whose responsibility does it fall to, to let business owners know, or, you know, landowners know to say, by the way, this code just changed, you have a certain amount of time to, it just...
Is there sign enforcement that goes around?
Right.
Checks, is that what happens?
I guess that's just what I'm wondering, like...
So we have, we have code enforcement.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily, I'm sure that they pass along that information, but I believe it probably depend on the magnitude of the change.
Right.
Of whether or not, you know, maybe our department gets involved in actively outreach to the community about this potential change. Like, when we did the downtown zoning update, I know there was a lot of communication that happened, so something more significant, I think the city does reach out and let, let everybody know. On maybe smaller code changes, I think, you know, we keep in touch through code enforcement and let them know that, you know, a change has occurred, and this is what's happening.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
Just one quick question as a point of reference. For table, under Table 2, the second property, 1900 Batavia Avenue, it says existing nonconforming. So does that mean that that property owner is going to need to come in and request his variance because he's nonconforming?
That's, is that the Campana Building?
So, no, that, I believe that property's in Batavia.
Oh, in Batavia, okay.
But, so with that property, I'm not 100% sure what that conformity, or that nonconformity is. I don't know if it's the size, or if there are multiple signs.
I see.
But I guess it's noted that there was a nonconformity spotted.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I thought with that one, too, the interesting thing is, it's right next to this property.
Yeah.
It's 1900 Batavia. This is 1950.
Do you know what the nonconformity is?
Okay.
Okay, any other questions at this time? Okay, well, ask the applicant if he wishes to address the Commission.
I don't really have anything new to add.
So we're just identifying and giving an address, please?
Oh, sorry. Rob Burns, 2000 South Batavia, Geneva.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just have to swear you in, because you're giving testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, everybody's good testimony today. So, do you solemnly swear to what you're, testimony about to give was the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
As I understand it, I have to go to the City Council regardless of what you decide tonight, so I'll be there in a week or two. You know, based on schedule and availability. I'm not sure what the answers to the questions, whether it helped solve any of the questions that you had or not. It appears to me that the, the other properties that were located are primarily retail, they're along Randall Road, they were new properties, they were PUDs. In other words, they don't sound anything like our situation. The closest thing to it probably is that 1900 that you were just talking about, which is my neighbor, which is the Houghton-Mithlin property. They have a large site as well on the same street. No one has ever complained about any of our signage, ever. We've owned it over 20 years. No one's complained, as best I can tell from the city staff, come forward now about this, quote, "problem." And it would appear to me that, I don't think it would be a great use of city resources to continue discussing this. I hope to God, if we get to the City Council, one way or the other, somebody's going to say, this is a different situation, this is not a new situation. I think there's a, one way of interpreting the number of properties that showed up is that there, there aren't anything like this. You're not likely to find anything like it, they're not going to show up, and if I heard what, what Jaden said a moment ago, it sounded like, or I think maybe you were suggesting, you're unlikely to come across something like this, so, you know, this came up once in 20 years. That's, that's a long time. We could be dead before the next one comes up. So, do you want to go through the machinations of trying to redefine different ordinances, which already are pretty complicated? I didn't, wasn't aware I was in violation of any. No one ever came to me to tell me I was in violation of any. I don't believe I'm in violation of anything that's doing anything wrong. So I would hope that, one way or the other, this is settled quickly, either here at this meeting or at the next meeting. I'm participating as a good citizen, owner in town, I'm a resident of the town, I have a lot invested in this town, you know, financially and family-wise, and that's why I've participated. I don't think I need to tell you that we could probably come up with a couple people in this town that if a similar situation arose, they may not react the same way. I have not done that, and I would hope that would be taken into consideration. So, that's all I have to say. And I'll, I'll be interested in, in hearing what your recommendation is. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer, but that's, that's all I would add.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, there's, I don't believe you wish to testify on this matter, sir. Do you wish to testify on this matter? I was going to ask you, because you're the only one in the audience. Okay? That makes it easy? Okay, then, is anybody online? Do we have anyone online?
We have no one online at this time.
Okay, so we don't have any additional public comment?
I gotta say, I've, I've struggled with this. Really not a fan of text amendments. And it's not just the floodgates issue, it's that they were created for the purpose, really, of limiting the jurisdiction of both this body and the City Council, for the very purpose of not granting variances. That it is one of the elements of government, where you can look at it, and you may not like it, but you know where you stand. And so, opening that door, and even allowing that, they would still need to come in and request a variance, I don't see that as an improvement, because in my mind, what that does is, it makes the statute less reliable. It leaves it open to interpretation, the makeup of the board, the alignment of the And the text amendment, as we have it, like it or not, is at least clear, and has been so for a great many years. I'd be remiss not to thank city staff for the homework they put into this. Obviously, they answered all our questions, had to contact a number of people to do so. On the other side, I'm not unsympathetic here. I mean, what Mr. Burns says is correct. He finds himself in a position that really was unexpected, not just of himself, but would have been unexpected of any property owner. It's been there a long time. I had hoped that perhaps we would get a response, that this could be declared illegal, nonconforming use, and could stay as is, but apparently, that's not the case. So I'm, I'm still struggling with this. But I'd kind of like to hear what the other commissioners think.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
I have a question for you, Mr. Burns. With the businesses that are in there, especially the Richardson, did you by chance speak with anybody there, or have any conversations? Because you said it was written in the lease that they would have this sign. So I was just wondering, on, on your end, if you did any researching, or kind of reaching out to see if the other, the businesses would be amenable to sharing a sign, or if there was some other solution?
I don't think there's any issue with the sharing of the sign that I'm aware of that would shed any light on this. I think the question is, the Richardson's sign, the third sign, no, I didn't talk to them, and I don't intend to. We have a lease, you know, it's, it's a contract. I can't break that lease. I would remind you that, in addition to that, I didn't get that sign and put their name on there. When they came in as a tenant, they dealt directly with the city for their permits. They did a, not going to throw out a number, but a substantial investment to rehab their space. They dealt directly with the city for their, for an entire permit process. Along the way, that included getting, taking advantage of the pre-existing sign location that had the waste management sign on it for a long time. So, they went in, and they, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I had actually forgotten before the last meeting, that they were, that they had gotten the permit for the sign themselves. So, the permit was already issued for that sign when they moved in in 2014. To me, that's significant. The city approved it. I didn't approve it. I had forgotten, apparently, that, that it was two inches longer in one direction and three inches longer in a different direction, so it's slightly larger than a 40-square-foot sign. I didn't hide that from you, I put that exact dimensions on the materials that I submitted. But it was approved, not by me, I had nothing to do with it, by the city. And their, and their lease, in fact, says that if you're going to do anything like that, you have to abide by every regulation of the city of Geneva, of any kind, which they did. So, when you're a landlord and you have a lease with a tenant, it doesn't behoove you to go looking for problems. And I don't need to tell you that the, the office space business these days, with people weren't, wondering whether they're going home, or working at home, or hybrids, or coming to the office, this is not a great time to be looking for problems with tenants, it's a good time to try to be extra careful with them. So, they have a lease, I didn't intend to talk to them, and, no, I did not talk to them in the, in the last month. If that's a, is that enough of an answer for you? Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any sense on how that happened, that the city approved that, knowing that that would be a third sign?
The, the third sign is the real estate sign.
But they were all still there in 2014, when he went to replace the waste management sign with the Richardson sign, is that...
Not the real estate sign.
Right, so the real estate sign was still there, was that thought, maybe the city thought it was a temporary sign, but still, he would be nonconforming, because it'd be a second sign on his lot, right?
So, what brought us here tonight was that the real estate sign, which is an exempt sign with the... sign within our sign code, was turned into what is classified as a freestanding sign, and that's where that third sign came from. The other two signs before, the one mentioned by Mr. Burns, is that was approved by the city, and that's why it is existing non-conforming right now. As you mentioned, it's slightly larger than the permitted 40 square feet. So that one is existing non-conforming. And then, as mentioned, that real estate sign was transitioned into what would be considered an additional freestanding sign, and now we have three freestanding signs on the property.
And that was in 2021, right?
I don't know the exact day. I think it was before 20... Or which sign? I'm sorry.
The real estate sign.
Yes.
It was 2021. So that was the, that makes the third freestanding sign.
Correct.
Right. So at that point, there was no discussion about, by the way, that sign is not allowed? I would...
So...
That's the second one, right? Because the third one was still being considered as a real estate sign, so when he was applying...
I'm saying, in 2021, when the real estate sign flipped over to what it is now with the business names, there was no discussion about whether that was allowed on either end?
That happened without coming to the city with the permit.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That was actually, I think Chayton suggested, 2020.
2020, okay.
Adam, do you have anything?
No, I agree. I mean, I, it's a really tough predicament for the applicant, but after hearing your perspective on, obviously, the text amendments, and I see your point there, too, so I... It's a really difficult one, for sure. I mean, I, just as easy would say to put in some allowable case where you can ask for two additional signs over a certain square footage, but then it does seem that we're making amendments for one specific case, which obviously is not what we want to do. So...
So I could just state, you know, from my experience in working on the sign ordinance, so as I mentioned in the last meeting, the reason why we put the one additional on there was to deal with anomalies, like, you know, double frontage commercial, large commercial frontages, entryways, multiple entryways. I mean, there's a lot of different slices on that. So it's sort of like, well, we'll give you one freestanding sign by right, and then if you've got certain additional added things to your particular, how your development is lined out, you can get up to an additional sign if you get it through a variance. So that was the process of it. And when I look at the conditions that are listed in there, those can all be handled by the one additional sign. So in my perspective, it's neat and tidy in terms of enforcement and understanding what your right is.
Right.
You put a second one in there. I'm not quite sure what the rational basis of, say, here's another one, we're just going to decide another one's necessary to handle anomalies?
Right.
Again, we can, we can go through and work through all those things, but the only thing that, that makes it different to me is maybe the second sign gives you some additional flexibility for these particular instances. But again, that can be managed internally in the ZVA process where we can make findings and not grant it. But it's a tough one, because just adding that second one in there, I just think we'll get, I mean, there are unique properties where that could be something where we would be given that, and it's just sort of like, well, we'll be doing, from my perspective, we'll be doing the same kind of analysis and walkthrough that we would do in a one versus two, it'd just be the same thing.
Right.
Wouldn't think be anything substantively different. So it's a tough one. It's really tough.
Well, I thought it was interesting, you know, we talked about adding on a qualifier or, you know, a certain amount of square feet of frontage, and, I mean, just then going back and looking at the chart, it's not by any means, this property isn't by any means larger than a lot of other properties that do have just the two signs. I guess, I guess to me, that felt like, I mean, in looking at these, the number three, including a variation, I kind of felt like the only one that qualifies here is the multiple buildings, obviously, that, and the location of one building being behind the other one, that's, you know, was about the only thing that made it that unique to be able to warrant that consideration, I guess, so...
But do you need an additional sign over and above two to make that work?
Yeah.
That's the key question to me. So...
Yeah.
Again, I think you put the one in there, understanding, you know, you get a free one, you get a freestanding one by right. They just, that's just, that's just it.
Yeah.
And then you can ask for an additional one based on, you know, your configuration. You've got two buildings, you've got large frontages, you've got multiple driveways, you've got, you've got two roadways that you face, so obviously, it could be possible confusion to whether this is the same development because you happen to be on one road versus the other. So again, we just put that in there so that it gave that flex, and then we go through and talk the merits during the variation. I don't know what the additional sign will do for that. I mean, I think...
Yeah. My, I guess my feeling was that one sign per address, like one's 1950 and one is the 2000...
Yeah, there'd be another example of, like, multiple, well, like...
So two signs, one sign.
Multiple addresses, so obviously, you want to differentiate that. So you're dealing, kind of... Any other comments at this point?
It is...
I just, to me, it's...
Because I don't, I mean, I feel, I feel very sympathetic with the situation. But yeah, I mean, then, just, yeah, it is really a tough, tough situation.
Mr. Chairman, is a motion in order at this point? I don't want to cut off any discussion here.
I think we can close the public hearing, and there's no additional public comment.
Can I just ask one more question?
Please.
Sure. If you have another question, if you definitely want to ask it.
Um, if, have you considered just sort of, you know, I'm sure you've considered the different ways that this could go, a different look? If you were going to be limited to two signs, have you thought at all about what that might look like if there, if there did need to be a change?
I've been under the thought process that it's inconceivable that this will not be allowed. So no, I haven't, not thought about that. I think it's one thing if this was a new development, and you were coming in here and you're asking for something that seems kind of crazy or something. And from what I can gather from staff, if there were some unusual configuration, or it's a large project, which this would be, I think you would agree, do we have another office project that's as big as this in this town? Or anywhere close? No? So this would be different. And as I understand, that would be typically be a PUD process. And in the PUD process, there's a lot of things that can be traded off, and I've heard some of you say, and I've heard some of the staff say, well, you can, David has told me, you can, in those processes, you can maybe have a third sign or a fourth, or some other issues get in, you know, that need to be dealt with, and so to make it really good for everybody, you negotiate and you make some trades. I didn't have that luxury. This project was built before I bought it. Everything was there. I find it quite powerful that the city approved this sign, and I didn't have anything to do with it. It could have been, you know, denied at the time. No one's ever come to me about anything until we added the, changed the nature of the sign at the 2000 driveway. So I'm still quite hopeful that this would be allowed, if you want to call it grandfathered. I don't know what the proper term is. Nonconformings, this is your field more than mine. I'm sorry, I don't know anything about it. But it just seems reasonable to me that that's what should happen. And do you need, do you have to defend that to someone else coming in on something else in the future? I don't think so. I don't know where it's ever going to come from. But if there were another pre-existing situation in this town that ran afoul of some of the other ordinances that have been somehow passed, I would hope that due consideration would be given to the fact that it existed before these things became a problem. And so that's, I know, Rebecca, you're probably hoping, and maybe I've been thinking about this, but I have, I have not, and I just feel that what's right should, will end up happening. So, and I realize you're trying to wrestle with these laws, that's what they are, and, you know, you don't want to go afoul of them, but, you know, you need to do what you need to do. And whatever it is, I think we should get on with it and get home. You guys work hard enough. I know you do. I've seen you do it on TV and elsewhere. So I don't have anything else to cause you to extend this discussion, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Nobody else has any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Madaskil, second.
Moved and seconded. Chayton?
Hallman.
Hallman, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Madaskil.
Madaskil, aye.
Hearing is closed.
Okay.
So I'm going to do something I normally don't do in terms of the stickler for the ordinance, so I don't see a rational basis for not saying we should have two. I think we, I think that if we put a limit on there to two, we still can deny, you know, walking through it on a variation request and get to uniqueness of the property. So maybe providing a little additional flexibility on that allows him to, allow him and others to apply, and then we can take an advisement and decide, you know, whether it's suitable. There's a strong emphasis on me saying is that any of the conditions that would be typical for us to grant would be covered by the one sign. That's what makes it hard for me, because I could see that that's a strong force of the ordinance, is that there's a rational basis for that, and those conditions that we've been thinking about putting in would be the type of thing we would do to allow additional. But that one additional, making it two versus one, that gives a little more flexibility and allows unique properties that are out there the chance to come in and may state their case, like this gentleman did. So that's good. I think the other thing is that, in general, if it's going to be a large commercial or office industrial project, it's going to be a PUD. So almost nine times out of 10, it's going to come in as a PUD, so we have high-level control over that. But it's just these one single zoning lot questions, older areas, redeveloped areas possibly, where we might want, who knows how the configurations are going to be and how the parcel's going to be eventually configured? You know, it could be a consolidation downtown of some parcels that they don't want to do a PUD for whatever reason, and like, it's got multiple buildings on it, and like, then while you can only allow one, we've got multiple buildings and different frontages. So, you know, typically, I don't like moving the ordinance around, but I think this one is a little additional sunlight, like, a little bit more, and I think at the end of the day, it doesn't really limit our control very much, so we still have the control over whether we grant or not.
So you're, just so I'm understanding...
I'm saying, I say I'm okay with two.
With the text amendment? Okay.
What are your thoughts on the limitations? Would you put a distance limitation or anything?
I don't think there's any limitations on it. I just think we just allow two, and we come in, and because, again, the limitations, I think staff made a good point in the report, is that those limitations would be conditions and things that we would, we would come in an advisement and say whether pro or con, right? We'd say, well, you don't have enough frontage. I mean, you'd like, and we'd go through this exactly the same analysis we did now, like, how is other people situated? Like, so are your situation in fact unique, that you need this additional one or two or not? And so we would go through, like, you've got four driveways. Well, okay, that's a different situation. So I don't think we need to overburden the text amendment. We just need to provide a little ray of light in there to give somebody additional flex. They still got to come in front of us, still got to make their case, but it gives them the ability to do so, so...
I'm okay with that.
I just, really, I'm not. I do not like, because I know how much time we spent on it. Like, and I know what the, some of the arguments that were put forth on that, you know, was to get, just to put a certain level of control on that. So we were just inundated with people, like, just trying to flex it out and trying to get maximum, because signage is like that.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very critical for businesses and stuff to, for visibility, especially on high-speed roadways where you've got, you know, you've got to have decent signage to get attention on what's going on when you're on a busy, fast road, so...
Right.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be appropriate to make a motion at this time?
If there's not any additional discussion.
I don't have any.
I would make a motion to approve the applicant's requested text amendment to Section 11-14-5 AC3 of the Geneva zoning ordinance to allow variations considering two additional signs beyond the maximum allowed amount of signs upon a zoning lot, subject to the findings of fact of staff.
Madaskil, second.
Moved and seconded. Chayton?
Hallman.
Hallman, aye.
Madaskil.
Madaskil, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Okay. So getting to specific on this, this particular lot.
Yes, if I might, second motion to approve the applicant's request for a sign variation to allow two additional freestanding signs at 1950-2000 South Batavia Avenue, Geneva, subject to the findings of fact of staff.
Madaskil, second.
Moved and seconded. Chayton?
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Hallman.
Hallman, aye.
Madaskil.
Madaskil, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Passes.
All right. When is this gentleman going to be in front of city council?
So these two recommendations to the city council will be at their, I believe it's October 3rd, Monday, October 3rd, 7:00 PM, right here in the city council chambers.
All right, sir, appreciate your patience, and thanks for going through the process.
Thank you all very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment, and I don't think there's anybody online to comment. Sir, do you wish to address the commission?
You've only two.
Okay. This is a, like, this is your second straight meeting where you have addressed the commission, so I'm just going to point that out. This is your second straight meeting. You did the last meeting. This is your second straight meeting, you did the last meeting too. So that's fine.
I'm frightened to come up here. My name is John Dashner, and I live at 733 Lexington Drive in Geneva. I, I, two things. First of all, I, I did want to mention, I have been paying very close attention to the warehouse market in and around the Chicagoland area, and also nationwide. And I'd just like to call attention to the fact that many of these big box stores that are doing the online services that we struggled with earlier in the year are starting to slow down their building programs. I can certainly send to you the data from the sources that we see out there. I just caution the city in pursuing that particular avenue and development to make sure that we don't end up with a lot of empty warehouse spaces in three or four years. I think that's something that you need to be very mindful of. I think there's other communities around the, the country that have, in fact, experienced that same phenomenon, where a developer would come in with a speculative building and say, oh yeah, we're going to have a fantastic, you know, 135-door warehouse, and, and we're going to create all these jobs and all this extra money, and then in three or four years, because the economy starts to contract and they're not using that particular facility as, as significantly as they had in the past, it lays empty. And I, I just caution the city and the planning and zoning to really look very hard at that. I think you have a, a development that's coming close that you put up on your development site south of Roosevelt Road on the east side that is a, a very large complex, and that particular developer has a history of, of one particular client, and using that one particular client who, that client is starting to pull back its development program. So I would ask that the city really investigate that. I know you have a hard time pitting those developers down as to who exactly is going to be in that site, but I think it's worthy, and it's incumbent upon the planning and zoning to look at these developments down the road, five and 10, 15, 20 years, because it will have an impact on, on the whole community in general. So I just caution that. If you want that information, I'd be certainly more than happy to give that to you and pass that along. I am also curious, now, I certainly make my money on development, I'm a material supplier in the new construction area, so I'm always interested in new construction, that's what I do. And I did notice just today that the Hillwood Development came out on the construction side, and they said that their value on that particular project that was, just had the ribbon cutting today, I think, was valued at $561 million. I don't think that that's quite consistent with that development that they had proposed. And I was just curious if you had any insight or any thought about that? Possibly they missed a place, a decimal point in this report, but I think it would be important to really kind of suss out exactly what is going on with that. I'm just curious. And if you want that report, I'd be more than happy to give that to you as well, so... Thank you very much for listening, and I certainly appreciate it. And as the gentleman said, you guys do really hard work, and it's not easy, and, and you do really good work, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Okay, anyone online?
Nope.
Okay, so other business?
So I just wanted to touch base on a couple new projects on the development projects map on the website.
New things in the pipeline?
Yes.
You guys don't have enough pipeline?
Yeah. So, yeah, right? So there's, there's several, there's a couple variations or smaller kind of type projects on the back burner that we do expect in getting in the near future, but the two recently added were 729 Hawthorne Lane variation for lot coverage. They're currently over on lot coverage with their driveway, other improvements on the property. They want to replace their driveway, and because they're replacing that, if they put it back, it would not comply. So they're seeking a variation to put it back essentially exactly how it is. I think it's going to be reduced by maybe 20 square feet, but it's still going to be over. So they will be coming before the Planning, Zoning Commission requesting a variation to exceed their maximum lot coverage. And then as Mr. Dashner mentioned, there's a new project called Venture Park that's being proposed by Venture One Acquisitions LLC. They are interested in annexing, I believe it's 55.62 acre site on the east side of Kirk Road between Old Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway, right behind Country House, across from the Fox Valley Ice Rink. They are seeking annexation right now, a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. So they need the comprehensive plan amendment because the southeast area master plan that encompasses that portion of the community, there's a subarea plan. Within that subarea plan, it calls for commercial for a majority of that site. They are seeking a light industrial project, so they would need that comprehensive plan amendment. And then they would also like to rezone the property from its base designation, once it gets annexed, it's rural residential, RR, they want to rezone that to the light industrial zoning district to permit that light industrial development. The preliminary concept is a, I think it's 712,000 square foot warehouse facility on the site, that have access to Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road. So those are the two new projects. I think since the last time we met, Connaught Dentistry went to City Council and was approved. And then, as mentioned, this, these two recommendations tonight for the Batavia Avenue sign variation and text amendment will go before City Council on Monday, October 3rd. The fence? Yes, that was the other one. That was approved as recommended.
Shay, can I ask, the property next to the Ace, 738, I've forgotten the name, the zoning proposed sign is still on the property, is there something going on with that?
What, what site is that again?
The, the sign the city sticks in the ground, telling people that the request has been I saw that when I first joined the commission, but I haven't seen it since. Is there something new going on there?
And, and what site is it?
This is the-
Site?
To the west of the 711. It was going to be-
Hamilton Place?
Yes.
Oh, Hamilton Place, yeah. I believe the sign should still be up. We, we haven't heard any differently from the applicant right now. I think they're still working through a couple of detailed items, mainly with the electric division, but as far as we know, they're still pursuing those applica-
Okay.
-applications. But you said the sign wasn't there, or is it still there?
It is, yeah.
Okay, great.
I thought perhaps something new would come in, but they're still working on it?
Yep. And then the Illinois Planning Conference is next week, Wednesday through Friday, and I believe there's commissioner training one day, so perhaps Matt will send that out tomorrow, or I can send that out on Monday, just reminding the commissioners if they're interested in
It's sponsored by APA?
Yes. Yep, the Illinois Planning, or the Illinois Chapter-
Illinois Chapter.
-of the American Planning Association. Okay, that's all the updates I have for now. Okay, who's going to do men's job?
Thank you.